We're proud tonight. Going to call this Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting in order for Thursday, March 12th. All three selectmen are present. The recording secretary is present. The town administrator is present. Mr. Leo Martelvis is present. Who was also given an assist by Linda Nickerson, who I met for the first time at the town election. And the thing is, kudos to Linda Nickerson for doing what she does, she uploads the videos. Okay, gentlemen, we have some old minutes, so last week's minutes.
They're not old, they're just
A week old.
Most recent.
Yeah, most recent.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 5th regular meeting minutes as amended.
I'll second Bob's motion. Any discussion on them? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Before I open up the public comment, I just want to make a general comment to the public from the chair of the board. I think we had a great election day. All votes were properly tallied and counted for. And everything ran smoothly. We had some small glitches along the way, but they were all dealt with and managed appropriately. And so I would say thank you to all the town officials who participated, all the volunteers who helped out at the election. And the weather, this is for Mr. Tom Moderator, the weather behaved itself. No snowstorms. Okay, now I'm going to open up a public comment. I'll start with the back row.
Okay. First, I'd like to congratulate Dave for his successful run again this year.
So noted.
But also, I'm going to jump on it right away, the bandstand still hasn't been repaired yet.
Well, contrary, work has already started and it's been worked
When did it start?
No, no, he's confusing a couple of bills that we just approved. They just painted in the benches. But that's been allocated and I'm planning on giving that gentleman a call, asking what we've got.
Yeah, because I'm jumping on it early, so
Yep.
No, wait, we were talking, it's coincidence, we were just talking about that today, that the weather's turning, starting to turn nice. We should be seeing some work on that.
It's going to be used probably for the Arts on the Common. And you know, you have some broken electrical outlets there that may or may not be hazardous.
Absolutely.
So, you know, the sooner this is taken care of, the better. And the money is already set aside for it, so
Sure, yeah, question is timely, but the thing is, it's already been addressed.
Okay, well, just trying to stay on top of that.
Thank you. Don?
This Saturday at 10 o'clock, Don Larson, 32 Birchfield Drive. This Saturday at 10 o'clock, Reef Across Dunbar will meet here at the town offices. And we'll remove the reefs from all three cemeteries and start historical cemetery. And we'll cut the bows off and recycle those if we can reuse them again. And we'll be picking up the floral markers for the red tips and the tripod reef stands. And it'll take maybe an hour at the most, depending on how many volunteers we have. Everybody is welcome, young and old.
Okay. Say that time again?
10:00 a.m., Saturday morning, the 14th.
Okay, thank you.
We've got nice weather. It shows it's going to be sunny, maybe a little brisk, but it'll be sunny.
Excellent. Okay, before we go into regular business, I'd just like to, Dave is a newly elected selectman. And we have some actions coming up. Do you want to just recuse yourself now from the action?
Yep, I'll recuse myself from all votes until I get sworn in after Friday at 5:30.
Okay. Since you are, I used to value your input, so I'm going to ask you to comment on anything that you added. And I'm not going to make you sit in the audience. I think you're fine.
All right, thanks.
Just don't hit me like you usually do.
All right.
That's just a little humor, gentlemen.
You can still make jokes, Mark, Steve.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Don, you're up again, on the agenda.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that Pararosa 31:95-B, paragraph 3, sub-paragraph B, to accept fundraising dollars raised by the cemetery trustee, Don Larson, in the amount of $987. Do we have those monies clean?
We do.
I need a second, Bob.
Second.
Any discussion on that, Bob?
No.
Okay, just for the public, what Don did is took some trash items, in my opinion, and turned them into gold. So kudos to you, Don. And all in favor? None. Now, I'd like to make a motion to, that's $987.
Can I just get clarification on that first motion? Basically, what you have just authorized is the cemetery trustees to spend that?
No, I authorized, we accepted the money on behalf of the town.
Okay.
Now, I'm going to make a second motion.
Okay, gotcha.
I have to make a second motion to, from the selectmen, to give authority to the cemetery trustees to spend these additional dollars in this calendar year of $987.
Second.
Any further discussion? This is, I call it found money, and I think there's a bunch of projects going on in the cemetery. And I think they'll use those dollars wisely, and they'll account for the dollars. But I think it's a good thing to do because they turned, as I said, trash into gold. And so, kudos to the committee, the cemetery trustees. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Bob, you just got to coordinate with Lean as far as the transfer of the monies when needed.
Okay.
I think I know where I can find her.
Want to let them know instead of trash that they were the old cemetery signs?
Right. One man's treasure, another man's trash. What they were was, it was a post, a granite post of a pondry line, had a D for Dunbar on there. And that was one item. And the three other items were the old cemetery signs, which were redone. But they had some collector's value to some, and for others, they had no interest.
There is no trash anymore. It's all, has all has historical value now. And people move into town and they want to have a part of that. So there is really no more trash. It's a wise thing to do to save these things.
Well, I'm going to have Don come to my basement, help me clean it out and turn it into gold.
I'd like all the rebuttals to go to selectman Michael Kaminsky.
Okay. Moving right along.
Should let me put the truck on, the transfer truck on.
Well, we got some progress on that to be put there, right? Okay, I have another item here. Pararosa 31:95-Bravo, paragraph, Roman number 3, sub-paragraph B, I'd accept a donation of $20 for Reef Across Dunbar. I need a second, Bob?
Oh, second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Lean, you have $20 from the
We do.
Okay, you put that in appropriate fund?
Yep.
Okay. At our election, one of our articles under the warrant, we did some housekeeping regarding the welfare director. We had a article in there which essentially gave the selectmen, again, approval to hire and fire the welfare director. This was given in the past, but was never documented. At this past town meeting, we documented it appropriately to clean up, do our housekeeping. And so, in the interim, we have a interim welfare director. And Dave, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
No.
Okay. Well, the interim welfare director will Well, you had Mike. We will have our interim welfare director until the warrant as passed goes into effect next March. And at that time, should become a regular, go from interim to the regular director of welfare. Any discussion, Bob, on that?
It's period of one year, this motion that you guys are
Well, it's not a motion. I think it was Carrie as an interim director. She is currently the interim director.
No, I think you have to
You have to
Okay.
See, if you read this, it says you have to appoint her for one year till
Then I think, then I'd like to appoint Jeannie Black as the interim welfare director to fulfill the vacant term until next March of 20, March 1st of 2021.
I believe she goes by Zimgraski.
Zimgraski.
Yeah.
And I'll second your motion.
Any further discussion, Bob, on that?
No.
Now, I say thank you to the voters for helping us clean up, do some housekeeping. All in favor?
Aye.
Make the voting notifications clean if you will.
I will.
Okay. Now, this one, Dave, you have. I'm going to call on you for this one. Okay, we have a town pot. I think, as I've seen them out on the town pound working this week, please give us an update where we are.
Yep, they started, I think, last Tuesday when we were voting. Rebuilding some of the walls that were knocked down and/or had fallen down at the town pound up in the center of Dunbar here. They actually did much more work than I had originally thought they would. They took down on the right-hand side, as you walk in, a 12 to 14-foot section. All the way down to the ground, just about left the big base rocks and rebuilt it all the way up. And on the left side, as you walk in, they did about an eight-foot section the same way. There were still a couple of dips in the top and some more rocks around the backside. And I think they pretty much completed that today. There might be a few more rocks. But they pretty much used all the rocks up right on site. And if we want to do any further work, we'd have to bring rocks in at a different time. But I think it looks much nicer than it had in the past. And they also, when they were there, noticed they couldn't get in the door. They shaved the door down. And the edge of the door has been plane down, so it operates now. You'd go walk in and out. The top is not as level as I had hoped we would get, but without bringing in additional rocks and starting from the ground up, I don't think it's ever going to get back to the state it once was. So, I think it looked very nice. I was hoping you two could stop by and take a look at it. And Leo was going to stop by and look at it also.
Yeah, can, I didn't look at it, but can they take what they have and dispense it to level it off?
They already did take from a couple areas.
But from the top?
Yeah, they did.
And moving along?
They did some, Leo, and I hadn't been back there after they did today, but they were going to take the small rocks and fill in some of the
More and more, yeah, right.
Yeah. I don't think there's enough to take the whole curse out of it. That's the only problem.
Oh, you had a
Yeah, the entryway, the right side's very tall, the other side's almost down a foot. We really can't correct it with those site rocks.
Okay. So, Bob, we'll take a look at it this week? And then we'll give you approval to make payment as needed. We're pretty much 90% there.
I'd say so. The other thing, you know, this was one step to get it up and more functional and more usable and pretty to look at. If we want to take another step in this year or on another year to crown off the top a little bit better. It was my hope one year we could put the oak around the top that was originally there. And it will never be done in this state as it is, but
You know, you're asking for another maintenance project.
Right, right. So, at this point, I think we've taken something that's several hundred years old. We've, everything where the log hit it and it was knocked down and where it had fallen down naturally, we've stacked it back up. So, I think it's pretty functional.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. I was going to say one more thing. Leo, were they plane that door edge down? Is there a chance you might hit it with a little white paint on just the edge that they plane so it doesn't swell back down?
Oh, yeah, I can do that when the weather gets a little warmer, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay. Town pound update. I think the other two selectmen take a look at it, and then we'll make, give you approval next week, verbal approval to go ahead with any payments. If we need to, okay? Thank you, David. All right, next item. If you recall last week, we had a vendor come in with a potential food truck, a food vendor request, open up a food vendor on the common. I had some thoughts about it, and I'm going to open up my two colleagues, which way they feel about it. I can share my thoughts right off, but I
I was going to say, you know, not knowing the activity that happens here, I would rather not see that out there. Only because we don't know how busy this office gets or is overflow going to the library if she has a program.
My thought is, we open up for one business to use a town common and town park lots, then what's to stop the next business who wants to come in and say, "Oh, this prime real estate, I want to set up a tent there, and I want to set up another vehicle there and have another business coming out of there." I'd say it doesn't go with the spirit of the town common. Dave, I'm looking for your thoughts.
My thought was the same, and it seemed to be more of a gourmet type meal and a long wait for the meals, maybe. But, you know, it's not like a hot dog stand where you grab something, move it through quick. It's something that you're going to be waiting for. So I think, like Bob said, that's too busy here on different days.
Now, I'd like to take one other thing, not this absolutely not, but we do have activities on the common such as Hold Home Day. We have the Arts on the Common, and we have table fees. If they wanted to come out and set up their truck then for a table fee, I have no problem with them coming to a function like that, like any other vendor, paying their fees and setting up for that. Would, gentlemen?
I'm all fine with that, too. Might be hard for a $1 burger, though, to beat that. Old Home Day, we do the 50 cent hamburger.
Right.
What are you going to do, you know? But for Arts on the Common, we do, the food is a major part of our fundraising.
So it's competition to you?
It's competition. The ladies who didn't want us to do the food and that, we're talking about getting food trucks. So, but right now, I think we've got that settled that
Yeah, it's a semi-private event, and the thing is, we're not running it. And so I'll leave it to your best judgment, but you got to be careful who you prejudge against as far as you can't disinclude someone who wants to pay the table fee and offer something. Because people are having all sorts of stuff for sale, some, food stuff's a sum of it, too.
Know what you said, it didn't really sound like a hamburger, hot dog type
What was this guy saying?
I was going to say the same thing.
It's a little bit different.
This is, you know, when they're used to what's being served here, it's usually hamburgers, hot dogs, cheeseburger, maybe sausage once in a while. This might be a completely different line of food. And, you know, it'd probably be a good idea to give people choice because they have choice of which one of the tents they want to go to. So if they're willing to pay to set up, you know, it would behoove you not to accept the money.
Well, the one area that we would have him set up in, a week, you know, a couple of years ago, we had the soup guy.
Right.
And that, and part of the deal was, you know, we wouldn't charge him a fee if he made a donation. Well, he didn't make a donation, and he didn't just sell soup, he sold hot dogs against us. So
Well, can we leave it to you to manage that?
Yeah, give me the contact information and we will talk with him. As long as he's not selling, you know, if he's got gourmet food, hey, fantastic, because it's a good crowd for it.
It sounded, it sounded like it was to ask what she
Yeah, so if he's got a good product, we'd be more than happy to talk to him because that, you know, that will add to it. We do have the robotic kids, and we're going to have them on the blacktop. And they need like a 65-foot area, so it's going to take up a lot of space and that, but I think it'll be a good draw.
Well, Lean's going to have to call, we promised this vendor that Lean would get back to her with our decision. And at the same time, she'll pass your information, and then she can pass the information to you for those events.
Yeah.
Okay. So that way, you can, we don't want to get in the middle of micromanaging, but we just want to preserve the character of our town.
You just give us the contact because, you know, we'll be more than happy to talk to him and depend on his product and that, as long as he's got the guidelines. And, you know
Okay, we'll make it happen. And gentlemen, can we call this subject Coleman? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to go into some mailbox items. First of all, if you remember, there was a couple of weeks ago, we talked about a planning board, I mean, the planning and building department director was going to be going to court. COVID has taken its first toll. They've canceled the hearing, so she's going to be working with us. And she's on standby until they open up the courts again. We have a request for Lean from one of our town employees here. And if you look at the dates, I think we can prove that.
Yep.
Bob, if you can prove that, to remain, keep privacy, I'm not going to say the name. Okay, I got a
They're all set with this, right?
Yeah, it goes to the employee, Lean, if you can pass that on. I got a problem with the library, Lean, and we'll leave this faction to you, but Mr. Tuttle needs to honor his warranty. We got a problem with some of the paint at the library building. It's going to be, made more than likely will be a warranty item. If you would take, take that for action?
Yes. That's the
I don't know.
No, it's just an FYI that you had approached me, and I'm still following up with that.
This is a pass out to Lean, this is the food information.
Cool.
Okay. There's an item in here, I'm not going to issue it. I like to have, I could talk about it next week, but this talks about, I got to look at that. I think I'd personally, the conservation commission, come in and talk to us about that.
Okay.
And I just don't want to
That was, um
Britten clear.
It was
No, no, it wasn't Britten, I was, I'm sorry.
George Holt.
George Holt. But it doesn't have to be him, it's just one person to come in and talk to us about that. I'd be very appreciative of that. And in the meantime, maybe homework assignment for next week to read everybody, gentlemen? Yep?
I did send that to you, right?
Yeah.
I didn't get this by you.
Do you want to send it again?
Please. But the thing is, I would like
I don't remember seeing that.
I'd like to invite that person to come in and talk to us about that. Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Don, sorry, say it. I have a sealed bid, first sealed bid for the truck is in. So ladies and gentlemen, if you're listening, that town truck is for sale. My first bid is in. Bid it now, it's going to go hot. It's going to go hot in the end of the month. So I need bids. Pass it to Lean for safekeeping. We're not going to open it tonight.
You got one bid?
One bid, yes, we did. I tried to take a peek and Lean was yelling at me. All right. Here's a, if you recall, one of the last items on the articles of the warrant included a, it was passed unanimously by the voters regarding the House bill, the redistricting following the census. Lean, if you could get a draft started for us, and we can review it. Dave, you're happy with that? We have three weeks to get, four weeks to get this done. Okay? So pass it to Lean, and we'll get something started, and we can, Lean, you can do it by email initially. Just send a draft of how you recommend it to us. And we'll go from there.
Lean, I'd also recommend contacting that lady. She might already have a draft set up of some sort.
I did ask her at the town, after town meeting, and this is what she gave me, so
Oh, she
I'll look up the chapter and see if they have more on it.
Okay.
How's on gerrymandering?
It is, so we don't, it's, it's a, the problem with every, sometimes gerrymandering can be political. And it's a letter that the vote is voted on. We want to make it so it stays apolitical and has reviewed by both sides. And it's done in a fair, just process. And I think it's unanimous vote by the voters. All right. Gentlemen, I just want to let you know that we have a citizen that's complained to the police department about nonavailability in the evening. The complaint has been passed to the police chief. It's under investigation. It may be solved by next week, but I think the individual may want to come in and speak to us next week. So it's a TBA. I have the police chief in a fact-finding mode right now.
I think an email from chief was forwarded to you guys as an update.
Okay.
Is it attached to that?
It could be.
Back page?
No. Summary
You sent the two emails almost identical time over.
No, no, but I sent it, I printed it off. It's not in there?
No. It's okay, but the thing is, there's no action required on
I'll write it to you, then.
Yeah, no action required on it, and I just want to make sure that
I didn't see the chief, I saw the
Correct.
There's something
He sent it later today and asked me to share it with you, and it might still be in my printer. I probably didn't bring it in.
But the thing is, I just want to make sure that we have all the facts before we make any decision or recommendation. And so, the thing is, it was concerned by one of our citizens, and I think we just have to address it appropriately. I think that's on the agenda for next week. And I just got a, I got a letter appreciation from Dave and Carol Crocker. They're developing a road, developing a host, a road on, can you, let me just, Kyle?
Kitty Road.
Kitty Road, Kitty Road. And she, they basically said, "Thank you," and they talked, there's a lot of interesting facts they point out. But at the end of the letter, they want to, they recognize two people in our department, in our town, for helping them out in their efforts. And the thing is, I'm going to read this. "They wish to convey our deepest gratitude and appreciation to Lean and Donna for their endless efforts to make Dunbar and our endeavor, Dunbar Endeavor, a reality. These two gals simply epitomize what consummate office personnel should be." We're talking about Donna out of our building and planning, and Lean right here. So, Lean, if you could just take this letter, make sure you've got a copy of Donna's in your personnel files, please. Very good. So, again, these, these two folks have had a piece of property on a Class 6 road. It's in disrepair. And they went through quite a bit of challenges for this year to get a path to where they could build. And these two individuals really guided them along the way, and I think we made some progress with that. Thank you.
They haven't started on the road yet, have they?
I'm sorry?
They haven't started.
No, no. But they're, they're getting their ducks in order.
Yeah, right.
Okay, my inbox is empty, so I'm going to open up a public comment again.
Okay. The thing, I happen to be reading the agenda and on the bar, it was actual list on the back page. So I thought I'd look at it, and this peddler's ordinance, how long has this been in the wings?
Two years.
Can, is there a reason why it's not being acted on?
I think that at some point, Dan had said he was not interested in pursuing it, but
Yeah, and then, and then they had talked about maybe doing it, and then they just kind of
But is it up to them to say no, or up to you guys?
A little bit of both. The thing is, it's, yeah, it's been on there for a while. The thing is, it hasn't risen, but the thing is, this, I think this vendor coming to us probably brought it to a surface and
Well, yeah, because, you know, I heard the officer speak to her briefly when she was here. So anyways, like I said, I just happened to look at this, and I said, "Well, they're still there," you know? And I don't understand why it's still there.
Correct. Anything else, we can take a fraction. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, reminding us. The thing is, I'll be honest with you. What he pointed out is, we get the back page and it has some outstanding items in there. And the thing is, it gets, sometimes it gets, there's a lack of attention to those things, and I think, I think we're all guilty of that.
Yeah, well, no, I agree, town common policy, and I don't know what kind of a policy you need for the town common.
Correct.
But the peddler's ordinance, I thought, was a no-brainer right from the beginning, and it's just dragging on.
Yeah, Chris, Christopher Romalard had come in and talked about a little bit why it wasn't going to be effective or whatever. And maybe we'll need to hear from Chris again.
Yeah, yeah, I know he was going to do some further action. I don't know if he got time.
But I think it's, what I'm thinking has happened, and it got to a back burner, and the thing is, the back burner item is simmering out there.
Yep.
You know, is it possible on some of this stuff to just delete it out of there, so? You know, because what happens is just shows up every week and
I think we have consent in there.
Just delete the strikeout?
You got it.
Yeah.
And job descriptions, we got that, we're working on that, but the thing is
Then, something may get looked like this Lester, though.
Yeah. Okay, so noted. Anything else? Anything else, though?
No.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, so noted. I think we appreciate your concern there. Don, anything else?
I would just like to thank Lean and her staff for helping me with the raffle tickets and selling them. They did an excellent job, and she was busy right in the middle of doing the town report and everything else. But she took it on and it was fantastic.
So noted.
Thank you.
Lean? Okay. I'm going to bring it back to the board now. I'm going to start with Dave. I'm going to let you chime in.
Um, I wanted to know, Lean, did we ever send an email out to the department heads in reference to wiping down their turf, surface tops a couple times a day here?
No, I haven't, but I plan on purchasing. My understanding from today's conversation with Randy is that the wipes are not the best thing, so I think we need to
I think the regular spray and towels
Right, it's going to be alcohol or
Ammonia.
Ammon, no.
No, peroxide.
Peroxide solution that we either just mix in a plain bottle and we'll keep them available.
Can we do that and get an email out to our department heads to make sure they're wiping down their surfaces a
Yep, you can do that.
A couple times a day?
The more alcohol the better it is, so please, 151, Akardi Road.
Yeah, I think we're going to be doing some sniffing of that.
You almost had me on that, Bob.
I was thinking he was going down a better road, too, this time.
Me, too. I think, oh, he's going to get some good value added there.
And you had talked about the lady that cleans here twice a week?
Three times a week.
Three times a week, and she does the surfaces, too, right?
She absolutely does. She said she does the doorknobs, um
Okay.
In fact, she's, she's, as I recall, I got a report, she stepped it up this week.
She already has, yeah.
Okay, good. I just want to double check on that, yeah, so if we can even
But that's a great idea to have that, a bottle available in every department
Yep.
So that we can just try to wipe the surfaces.
If we do it in between her, I think it, you know, I know that John Wigan referenced it at our town meeting, so I want to make sure we're kind of following through with it.
John did a good job, too.
And the only other thing, Lean, if it's far enough away, next week, the request for pricing review for the town hall.
The bids.
To start the RFP?
Yeah, even if you wanted to show us the RFP, I don't think I've even seen it yet.
Okay, I'm just trying to get all, everything that was voted on in the computer, and then
If you want to wait an additional week, that's fine, too.
I'll put it on my agenda, and if I can get it squeezed in.
Yep, and if you can't, you know, another week, I don't think it's going to be the end of the world. That's all I have.
Okay.
Bob? Well, I did look over the contract, the, one of the contracts, and I don't know, but I don't think we should take any action at this time.
Okay, so Bob's just bringing up the fact that I approached you guys independently for clarification on the current contract of the police chief. And because of the time period that it goes into effect and
The issue, I think, is we weren't one of the negotiating parties. There's no selectmen here who's part of the negotiating parties on that. And I read the contract. There was no provision within the contract to reopen and renegotiate terms of the contract. So I didn't see any avenue where we could reopen it legally. And I think, I don't think, it's so late in the game, it's over And I think, I don't think, it's so late in the game, it's over two thirds, it's pushing two-thirds through. I think it'd be foolish to open it up at this point.
I think if we did, we'd have to ask our, for some legal advice and reference to opening up and, you know, make an amendment to it, and I think we'd have to ask for that, just to make sure we went right along.
Well, just, I don't know if you looked at it close, the original contract started with January. This next one, after that, those years went by, started with April.
April first.
And back then, from when I read it, because there's no, there's no clause that allows for, you know, renegotiating the contract or anything, so what's happened is, whatever should have been discussed then, you know, should have been discussed to start it from an earlier date, even though it was going forward from April, to start it from that other date or whatever, so I just thought it was gonna be problematic to bother with that, because once you start to reopen something, it's, you know, it ends up being.
More and more.
More problematic if something else comes up, and there's nothing, there's no clause in there that says subject, you know, where they could reopen that, so I just.
Yeah, I, I thought it was brought, brought to us as administrative to help make it easier for accounting, so I'm gonna say sorry, Lean, it's gonna have to live with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's only a little over a year to go on the contract.
Correct, and we've been working within that contract guideline, but I just wanted clarification for that April first to March thirtieth. March thirty-first.
I think, I think you can, you should continue the way you've been handling it, I know it's a little bit of a circuitous, a little difficult, but I'd say just handle it.
Okay.
Are we in consensus, gentlemen?
No.
Okay. No vote was taken. All right, Bob, you still with you, anything else?
Uh, that's it.
Okay, I'm gonna, now it's my turn, now I want gentlemen to take out your calendars. All right.
Days off?
So, so I just, I just gave you a twelve-month calendar, um, in the past, we worked out a schedule for a summer schedule, and I'm just asking for input as to when you would like me to, I can do the same things I did last year, do the opposites of the work, the selectmen's schedule, so that you have two options to go by, and depending on when holidays fall into place, and when we get back to our regular schedule, that would.
When's it normally start, Lean? April or May?
I thought it was June.
Dave just started, just got elected, he's looking for time off.
I don't know if I have my books on the schedule, I think I just threw it that far away.
You wanna, you wanna make proposal schedules, and then have us come back next week and talk about it?
Do you want me to work within the same scheme of last?
Same scheme as last year?
Last year, beginning.
I know, I know last year, I think we came back a month too early, it seemed like we could have gone another month easy, our agendas were almost empty for a month's worth of time.
I just wanna make sure that in September, though, my concern in September, that we have a meeting prior to the election. I wanna make sure we meet prior to the election, the week before.
So, we'll work them dates out.
Exactly.
So, in September, we could meet twice, Lean, but we'll work at the election and make sure we meet just before. Rennie always likes to come in before.
Exactly. And so, why don't we give it to Lean, just to come up with the proposals, and we discuss them next week?
Yeah.
But my only caveat is, we find out when the election is, make sure the week before the election, September, we're, we're meeting.
Yeah, and then our November election, we're gonna be back on a regular schedule.
Okay. And that's, that's right, and I don't think.
Like what you think, summer schedule already, Mike.
Gotta get them out. I like, and next week, I'd like to ask Lean, she could get a list of all the positions and extra duties of each selectman by department, we know how we're spread across.
That's usually brought to you by the town clerk.
Right, if you could ask her for that?
Yeah, yeah. Appointments of the select board.
Right.
So that we can decide which ones are gonna be on.
Correct. I think that we should start thinking about that. We gotta start thinking about who we're gonna name chairman.
Yep.
And we gotta start thinking about, I've been on the planning board for two years, it's time for me, usually it's only one year, I stuck two years on there.
Four years, aren't you really?
No, two, just two years.
Oh, who was on it?
Brian Pike.
No, because I haven't been on the board since Brian Pike's been on it.
Has it been three years? Been on three years, jeez, time goes by too quick. But it's been interesting, but the thing is, I think, that's one community wanna share the wealth. And, but the thing is, just be thinking about it this week, as we get ready for next week.
I'll try to get that list to you electronically, so that you can now.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I know we was afraid over the ones that we really wanna be on.
I think Mike's been doing a good job with that building. Is that one we're gonna check all the buildings on?
Wait, lost.
I've been on there for one year, who has not been on it, who's been not been on it, Dave?
No, I was on it too.
Bob, it's back to you then.
I've been on it, but I don't mind being on it again, so.
Okay, we'll see, we'll, we'll.
Swap with you.
No, yeah. I'm not gonna say a thing about that. It's not been running, oh, by the way, just for the public, if the, if the public wants to see our meter turning backwards, per se, there's a meter at the transfer station, you can actually see on a sunny day, the, the energy being produced. And hopefully, within a month or so, we'll have some good statistics to share with the public.
I actually put the link to look at the days of kilowatts on the hot topics, that's pretty interesting.
I checked it.
It's pretty cool, huh?
Yeah.
Leo, if you can, give me your feedback when you stop by up there, you guys have been doing stonework for a long time.
Yeah, we'll look at it hopefully tomorrow morning.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna ask the town administrator to chime in now.
I, everything I had was in the box, so I'm all set.
Okay, I need a motion, gentlemen?
Both are adjourned.
I'll second it. You're right. He's trying to trap me.